I'd like to call to order the Penn Trafford School District School Board Meeting of October 13th. I should have had my watch clock out already. At 7:05, let's start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
Thank you. Mrs. Sissick?
Here.
Mr. Kotasik?
Here.
Dr. Koschko? Mr. Leonard?
Here.
Mr. Newell?
President.
Mr. Leonard?
Here.
Mr. Newell? Mr. Namick?
Here.
Mr. Petrusi?
Here.
Mr. Stovar? Dr. Trey?
Here.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of September 8th?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Petrusi.
Second.
Second by Mr. Katsasik.
Question.
Question being called for. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried. Thank you. Turn it over to Dr. Harris for information.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Sissick. I have two pieces of information I want to share, kind of updates from last week. Last week, when Mr. Petrusi gave us the updates on the career in tech, we had some questions, but he did go back and find the answers to those. Do you want me to share?
Well, okay, I did, I called and, okay.
Sure. Basically, he found out that solar and wind energy studies are incorporated into the electrical program. Currently, we don't have enough space to institute a drilling program, but we were looking at different options.
Okay, I'll just add that I pursue the drilling program myself because of the Mersell cell situation. We have a gold mine in western Pennsylvania, western Indiana, western part of New York and eastern part of Ohio. I thought it'd be significant, but you have to have a nice piece of property to have that form of structure. We don't have much property. We're possibly thinking about it, but I told you that right now we're thinking about getting the cosmetology for ventilation purposes corrected. Then after we get that corrected, then we'll decide about the drilling. But until that time, we're going to have an entire energy program with solar and with wind and also with the drilling process. But right now, finances, so that's why we said incorporate solar and wind with electrical program.
Thank you. Also, on last Thursday, Kerry Hetrick, who's our athletic director, he was inducted into the Pennsylvania Sports Hall of Fame. He's borough's chapter, and several of the administrators went down, and it was a very nice ceremony, and it was a very great honor for Kerry's. It was great that he was inducted. We have information on our website. But it was also great that, I know Mr. Sullivan, Mr. Cap, you know, Mr. Inglaze, Mr. Koila, Mr. Saracini, Officer Myers, Mr. Simpson, and myself, we all went down to support him. So it was a great evening out. And like I said, Kerry Hetrick works very hard overseeing all the different athletic departments, and I know he spends a lot of nights out watching different games, so really appreciate it. So it was a great honor for him and as well as the district. Is Lucas Johnson our student evening representative in the audience?
He is not.
He is not here this evening? All right. Then we will get to our section for our favorites, the section of the month, Student of the Month. We have an elementary winner, and a middle school winner, and a high school winner. And each principal is going to get a chance to kind of talk about the child. But also, before they talk about the child, I also want them to incorporate some little update on what your school was currently doing to meet the board goals. Because each month, I think it's important that the board hear some of us, what we're doing in our schools. Just a brief summary of how we're reaching our goals that we established. So I'm going to start with Mr. Schwartz.
Thank you, Dr. Harris. I have three updates for Harrison Park to start the school year off. First, last week, the school had our reading treasure map celebration. We had various activities for the kids that celebrated over 375 students completing their optional summer reading. So it's about 75% of our kids did the optional reading over the summer, so we're very pleased. Additionally, we had 650 kids come to the school over the summer to participate in our school's open library session. That was a session, we opened the library up for two hours on Thursdays, and we had 650 kids participating in that. So over the six-week program, so we're very excited. Both activities were a huge success and a great way to start off our school year, so. Second, the teachers had an in-service training from the IU on analyzing our students' data in the state's PVA system. The training has led to many conversations or reflecting on our practices for student growth. This is going to be a focus area for the school throughout the year. And third, we are proud of two of our HP teachers who presented at this year's state mass customized learning conference. Kim Lance and Devon Vaya presented on concepts of our school's POD system. It was very well received, and Kim and Devon represented PT very well. So again, we were honored to be at that conference, and they did a great job presenting what we're doing here at PT. And finally, I'd like to take this time to introduce Haley Ford as our Student of the Month at Harrison Park. Haley, can you come on up? So Haley's a fifth-grade student at Harrison Park. She's here with her parents, John and Heather Ford, and her older brother Tyler, who's in seventh grade at Penn Middle School. Haley enjoys school and learning new things. Her favorite subject is math and likes to learn algebra skills in our school's math room. Mrs. Smith, her teacher, stated the following. Haley is an exceptional young lady. She's not only a stellar student, but also just demonstrates superior social skills when she interacts with her peers. As a student, Haley is driven and pushes herself to exceed my daily expectations. She's always going above and beyond with her schoolwork. She is naturally inquisitive and seeks out additional work and answers when interested by subject matter. She makes you think. As a member of my fifth-grade class, I have seen Haley working with struggling students. Just last week, while working on a reading assignment, I heard Haley helping a student through the task. As she took time out of her work to do this, it didn't even faze her that she would miss out on some device app time. This may not seem like a big deal, but in the eyes of many fifth graders, finishing an assignment and getting to have app time is a very big deal. She is very unselfish, which is such a rare quality to possess as a fifth grader. Her kindness, passion for learning, and laughter certainly make my classroom a better place. Outside of school, Haley is active with her equestrian team, training. She is having a great season, is competing in the state championships towards the end of the month. Haley would like to one day be an Olympic coach in the sport. She also likes to take archery lessons and spend time cooking with her mother. Haley is an outstanding student, possesses many of our school's core values, and is overall a great kid. On behalf of the students and staff of Harrison Park, I'd like to congratulate Haley for being the Elementary Student of the Month.
It's a little bit of an obstacle course here. Well, congratulations, Haley.
Thank you.
You think you could be a math teacher someday?
Yeah.
You seem like you'd be a really good math teacher.
Thank you.
And do you own your own horse?
Yeah.
Oh, good for you. That's the dream of many kids. Congratulations.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next, we have Mr. Sullivan, the principal of Trafford Middle School.
Thank you, Dr. Harris. I'll start too with a brief update of what's going on at Trafford Middle School. First of all, I want to say that our three major programs, the STEM program, our library initiative, and the foreign language program are going really well. The two new teachers that travel to Trafford every day are doing a fabulous job teaching. The students are, have been speaking the language since day one. Really engaged, really great things going on in those classrooms. The library, we've had, you know, several students in there every day. Mrs. Johnson's our new library aide. Instead of the red box, we have the read box in there, getting the kids interested in coming back to the library, reading books. She started a program where we're going to offer Barnes &amp; Noble gift cards for students who read the most in the library. So those programs are going really well. Just finished sitting with all of my staff who are involved in the individual differentiated goals, and we appreciate the training that they've had through PLN. A lot of the focus has been on the Penn literacy network and how they're going to incorporate those strategies in the classroom. We've spent a lot of time in our PLC meetings already discussing the depth of knowledge and how we're going to incorporate those in the classroom. Again, I thank you. We've selected some staff members to go to the Western Wall and IU here shortly to get some more training on that and bring that information back to the staff. We've begun to look at foresight data, which is our first benchmark for students, which will help guide instruction for the core subjects in the next couple of coming months. We're also selecting some teachers to, again, go to PVA's training, which is, you know, growth data. And that will also be at Western Wall and IU, so we'll be sending a team of teachers from there. So we appreciate that, and that's what we've got going on at Trafford right now. Like Mr. Schwartz, I'd like to introduce to you Kayla Turkowski, Student of the Month, Trafford Middle School. Kayla? Kayla's an eighth grader at Trafford Middle School. She's joined by her mother and father. Her sister Abby is a sophomore at the high school, and Nana's here too. Kayla has two older sisters that graduated from Penn Trafford, and 18 of her first cousins also graduated from the high school. Mom said that she's the last of the clan. We're going to miss her at Trafford Middle School, that's for sure. Academically, she's a high honors student, currently has straight A's. And I looked at her historical grades, she's never had anything but an A. She's on a student council, she's our treasurer this year. She participates in advanced classes for the last three years at Trafford Middle School and is currently in advanced lit, geometry, and she's taking Spanish. She's a part of our morning announcement team where they produce announcements daily, and they're live, much like what you see here with all this equipment. At Trafford, she participated on the WIRC, Western Wall and IU interscholastic reading competition. Kayla's also an athlete, very active in soccer all year round, at times playing on three different teams. She currently plays starting center for the AFFC, back on the 14 girls' team, on 14-and-under girls' team. Has played with the club since she was 10. She plays for the Trafford Middle School team two years recently. This year has helped the team to an undefeated record. She plays for the Penn Trafford Soccer Club, played on various in-house and travel teams for nine years. She's on the Trafford Middle School track team, where she participates in the triple jump and hurdles. And she also plays for the school's volleyball team. So she's quite active, proud of her green and gold. She's an avid snowboarder. She tells me she was a part of a team that went curling in Utah recently. She loves to read, her favorite classes are science and art. She tells me she's interested in the biochem field in the future. A few comments from our teachers. They say that Kayla is incredibly respectful, well-behaved, self-motivated, and is not afraid to take risks in her learning. She's incredibly kind, considerate towards all people, the students, the teachers, other staff, et cetera. And she was deserving of this work without giving it a second thought. Kayla's always prepared, always willing to volunteer, and takes an active part in class. She's insightful, pleasant, a definite leader. Kayla, on behalf of Trafford Middle School, I want to thank you for being who you are and making our school very special. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Kayla.
Thank you.
You seem like a very busy young lady.
Yes.
I bet your parents have a lot of miles on their cars. What's your favorite sport?
Soccer.
All right, well, we look forward to seeing you next year at the high school. Good luck.
Thank you.
And representing our high school administration team, we have Mr. Katsasik.
Thank you, Dr. Harris. Can I call the Gans and the whole Gans family? Come on up closer so you guys can hear. Everybody up. Come on up front here, guys. Come on closer. Mrs. Lochner, Mrs. Rush? Mrs. Molnar, come on up. I don't want to have to yell so you guys can hear everything being said. Thank you. Before we start with Aon, just a few items that are going on at the high school. When it comes to customized learning, we have a group of teachers that are getting together every week on Monday to start discussing how we can spread the customized learning throughout the high school. Some ideas have been thrown around, and for this year, they're going to try to incorporate new ninth-grade teachers to help spread the customized learning. A lot of teachers are on board, I'm excited about it. There's a learning process and a learning curve, but most of the teachers, I'd say all the teachers that we want to involve are on board, and we're still discussing the customized learning, and it's a new concept, so there's some growing that has to come along with that as well. Mr. Inglaze and I and two teachers went to Elizabeth Forward, and we saw the Zulama program. I'm not sure if you've ever heard of Zulama, but the backbone of Zulama is learning through gaming, and it's a different process. We weren't sure what it was going to look like, but we had the opportunity to look, go to EF to see how it operated. Every student that goes into the gaming program starts off with the evolution of games, and from there, it branches off to screenwriting, 3D printing, also game design. So it's really neat, all the different aspects to it. For this year, Mrs. Cornet and Mrs. Palmer will be incorporating it into their business classes just to see how it works. And our goal for next year is to actually have a gaming room with this gaming class. And we're looking to incorporate the evolution of games, game making, and game design. So it's an interesting project, it is through Carnegie Mellon. So it's going to be an eye-opener and a learning curve as well for the teachers, but everybody's excited. And what they saw at EF definitely struck an chord there, so we're looking forward to what they do this year as well as next year.
Supports our STEM initiative.
Yeah, that's our STEM initiative. As for the data part of the initiative here at Penn Trafford School District, the hands-on schooling, we're looking, actually, it is a database. Imagine a program that imports all the students' information and it's in one area, everything from their Keystone scores, to DIBELS, to their PSSA scores. So now, teachers can go in and look at all their information, and look at their PVA's, and look how we can grow these students. Actually, tomorrow, all the administrators are getting an in-service audit, so our goal is to get out to all the departments and spread the information about hands-on schools. So it's a one-place database to get all the information, so we can pull up specific kids that need to show growth, and we can work with them. So that is up, that's definitely in the future as well. I'd like to introduce our Student of the Month at the high school, Aon Gans. Would you please come on up? Lot of information, I asked a couple of teachers to write a few things, and they wrote a lot. There are a few high points here. Aon, he's in 12th grade. He has made a lot of accomplishments since his time here at the high school. He has changed both socially and his work style. Aon has begun working in the coffee shop his freshman year, and he was one of the first employees of the coffee shop. He quickly learned the skills of inventory and janitorial work. He was able to move up at the coffee shop, serving customers during his sophomore year. He was also successful with his placement. He learned how to interact with customers properly and stay focused on his work. When returning his junior year, he began to work at study placement at RCW. He is very successful at this setting, and he has always expressed an interest in the culinary field. Because of his success at RCW, at the beginning of the school year, he was enrolled in a full-time goodwill culinary program at Redstone Highlands. He has done tremendous at this program. He scored 95% on the SURF Safe test, which he needed for individuals interested in working in the culinary field. He is now working on studying for his SURF Safe test in the kitchen management, which will be very helpful for him gaining employment. He currently works in the nursing home's main kitchen, where he prepares dishes such as soup, salads, sauces for all the residents. At the staff at Redstone Highlands, he has expressed interest in applying for a permanent position after graduation working in their new bistro. Aon's final project there is to prepare and serve a multi-course meal for 20 people. Mrs. Molnar stated he is functional and he puts his best foot forward. She has had the opportunity to watch him grow as a tentative seventh grader to a confident young man he has become today. He is eager to learn, exemplifies a positive work ethic, whether it be in his English classes, in the coffee shop, or in the culinary training program at the Redstone Highlands. Currently, he's working the register in the morning, which is a very busy time. It starts at 7:15 in the morning. He is always a pleasant and outgoing personality, and his coworkers and customers, the supervisors, think fairly highly of him. Everybody, I would like to commend Aon Gans for being Penn Trafford High School Student of the Month.
Congratulations, Aon.
Thank you.
Sounds like Redstone Highlands would be very lucky to have you when you graduate. What's your favorite meal to make?
Anything, any meal.
Anything? You don't have a favorite food?
No.
Good for you, you need a cook. You should come up and do it. Well, thank you, congratulations.
Thank you.
Take a moment so the newspaper can have a picture of all the children who may be student of the month. So the three winners, and please come up with your certificates. Can you actually have a nice background while we're trying?
Just for... Okay, before you change my...
Sorry.
My shiverment. No, I'm staying. No, I'm not saying that, I don't think anybody else would have brought this. I'm not going to suck on this.
If it's Student of the Month panelists, if you want to leave, that's okay. No one ever tends to stay after a meeting. Thank you so much for coming out, I appreciate it. And as far as... And as far as information, that's all I have.
Doctor Porter, please.
There's a table.
All right. May I have a motion to approve the treasurer's report, any high school extracurricular funding costs? Oh, I'm sorry, there was, I didn't have a sheet.
Requisition of business.
Oh. Thank you. I presume there were not?
No one's on it.
I was white.
Great vision.
I know. All right. Once again, may I have a motion to approve the treasurer's report and the high school extracurricular funding costs?
Now's motion, I say.
Question.
Okay. Question being called for. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried. May I have a motion to approve the list of bills for the month of October?
Hold on.
Motion by Dr. Trey.
Second.
Second by Mr. Leonard.
Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried. Any old business? No, hold. Okay. We had a brief executive session prior to this to discuss real estate matters, so there's no time, no reason to meet at this point. New business, athletics and extracurriculars. Dr. Koschko?
Thank you, Madam President. Moved to accept the following resignation. Mary Pat Arzene, assistant volleyball coach at Trafford Middle School, effective September 29th.
Second.
Second by Mr. Leonard.
Question.
Question being called for. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Moved to approve the following volunteer coach. All coach volunteers must have Act 34-151 and Act 114 waivers on file with the athletic director. Larry Humman, volunteer assistant high school wrestling coach.
Second.
Question. Second by Mr. Leonard.
Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Moved to approve the following volunteer coach. All coach volunteers must have Act 34-151 and Act 114 waivers on file with the athletic director. Larry Humman, volunteer assistant high school wrestling coach.
Second.
Question. Second by Mr. Leonard.
Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Moved to approve the following volunteer coach. All coach volunteers must have Act 34-151 and Act 114 waivers on file with the athletic director. Larry Humman, volunteer assistant high school wrestling coach.
Second.
Question. Second by Mr. Leonard.
Question.
Question being called for. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
That'll be all, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Koschko. Mr. Kotasik, Budget and Finance.
Thank you, Madam President. Moved to authorize the administration to make payments amounted to $20,970.30 for credits earned by professional employees in accordance with the negotiated agreement. The list as presented to the board showing the individual payments due will be filed with official minutes at this meeting.
Second.
Second by Mr. Petrusi.
Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Moved to approve the expenditures for the high school renovation project for the month of September 2014 as listed, according to schedule as listed.
Second. Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Moved to approve the lease agreement with Pitney Bowes for postage equipment at a cost of $314.94 a month for 60 months.
Second.
Second by Mr. Leonard.
Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Moved to approve the purchase of a van to transport our light skills and special needs students for on-the-job training. The cost of the van is approximately $31,000 and will be purchased with access funds.
Second.
Question. Second by Dr. Trey.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Finally, moved to formally approve the school resource officer agreement.
Second.
Second by Dr. Trey.
Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Ladies and Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Kotasik. Buildings and ground safety, Mr. Leonard.
I have nothing tonight, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Leonard. Mr. Namick, employee relations, negotiations, transportation.
Nothing tonight, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Namick. Dr. Trey, food service.
I'll report, Madam President.
Thank you, Dr. Trey. Mr. Petrusi, personnel curriculum.
Thank you, Madam President. Moved to approve the list of additional substitute teachers for personal development for the month of October 2014.
Second.
Second by Mr. Katsasik.
Question.
Question being called for. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Moved to authorize the administration to approve any new parent volunteers in accordance with the fast practice of the policy. Volunteers will be used only where the teacher and or principal approves, and the volunteers will have Act 34-151 and 114 clearances on file.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to approve the following personnel. New employment is contingent upon the receipt of all necessary documentation and acceptance of Act thirty-four, one fifty-one, one fourteen waiver from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania within thirty days. Melissa Cheplek, Kristy Killen, and Sarah Mahaly.
Second.
Second by Mr. Leonard, question.
Question being called for, on favor, this will be a roll call vote. On favor, the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried. Let me ask, Dr. Harris, is anybody in the room that we just heard here?
Actually, no, we don't have...
Okay, I just wanted to give them an opportunity. Okay.
Move to approve the following leave request. Deva Barton, Meredith Hodge, Patricia Mintz, Vera Moog, Constance Vasco.
Second.
Second by Mr. Katasek, question.
Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote. On favor, the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to approve the following extern assignments. Cooperating professional, Heather Colvin, extern is Sarah Lochner, in speech pathology. The dates are the January fifth to fifteenth to March thirteenth to two thousand fifteen, and one hundred fifty hours of speech pathology.
Second.
Second by Dr. Koszka, question.
Question being called for, on favor, the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to approve Kelsey Morgan for early release and graduation in class of two thousand sixteen. Kelsey, as recommended by the high school principal and superintendent, verification will be on file June thirty, two thousand sixteen, when Kelsey has fulfilled all state and district requirements for graduation according to the state law and district policies.
Second.
Second by Mr. Leonard, question.
Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote. On favor, the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to approve the expulsions of students EX two oh one four oh one five oh oh three and EX two oh one four one five oh oh four.
Second.
Second by Dr. Trey, question.
Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote. On favor, the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move accept the following retirement resignations. Jan Perkins, effective January thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two.
Second.
Question. Second by Dr. Trey.
Question being called for, on favor, the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Here's Mr. Noel Altman.
Is it Jay?
It's Jay.
Okay.
I have a Dr. Trey.
Alright, Dr. Trey. Policy, public relations, legislative, title two.
Move to accept the following minutes of the superintendent's information meeting held on Tuesday, September second, two thousand fourteen.
Second.
Second by Mr. Leonard, question.
Question being called for, on favor, the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no.
I move to give final approval of the following revised board policies and administrative regulations as presented in the report. These policies were tentatively approved at the September eighth, two thousand fourteen meeting. A copy of these policies and regulations will be filed at the official minutes of this meeting, as listed.
Second.
Second by Mr. Petrusi, question.
Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote. On favor, the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to tentatively approve the following revised board policies and administrative regulations as listed.
Second.
Second by Mr. Petrusi, question.
Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote. On favor, the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried. Mr. Nemec will do taxes, insurance, and census.
Thank you, Madam President. Move to appoint Mr. Lawrence M. Walcott Jr. as per capita and occupation residence tax collector for the two thousand fourteen, fifteen year.
Second.
Second by Mr. Leonard, question.
Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote. On favor, the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
That is all I have, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Nemec. Mr. Brongo, solicitor's report.
Madam President, there is no report this evening.
Okay. Mr. Rainier, P E E A, representative.
I do have one thing tonight.
Uh-oh.
And I wish my good friend, Mr. Lego, was here to answer this, but in the event that the spat here between Highmark and UPMC doesn't come to a conclusion, and, or Highmark people are out of network, is there any possibility of a contingency plan where we might bring in an outside carrier, just us, not necessarily consortium? Are we legally allowed to do that? To bring in another carrier? I know the consortium signed an exclusive agreement with Highmark, but I'm just wondering, and I'm not trying to renegotiate anything or anything like that, but, you know, we're gonna probably have some members that I think we left out in the dark, and there might even be some people sitting in this room now.
I think if you started treatment, you know, they're trying to get to an degree, I'm not sure that they will. Dr. Koszka, many more. I understand if you already started treatment with the UPMC doctor and now you're continuing with Highmark, that they have to continue through two thousand fifteen.
I got a letter in the mail just yesterday that said there were a couple of conditions of pregnancy and things like that, and that's it.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, bringing in a universal carrier like Aetna or...
Right, that's what a lot of companies are doing, Aetna.
Or whoever. I just, I know that the consortium signed with just Highmark, and most of my members are very happy with that. I'm just saying, is there anything, you know, anything against legally that we can't do? It would say, hey, Aetna, come on in, and, you know, the people that want UPMC access, if they wanna pay for Aetna, they can go to Aetna, or UPMC, which, by the way, I had talked with UPMC people myself, and I kinda felt that they blew me off, to be quite honest with you. They didn't seem to want our business, but, just a question. I would've thought this would've worked itself out by now, but...
So would you know what Allegheny County Consortium is doing the same situation, Sean?
Allegheny County, also, UPMC basically would not talk to them.
So what are they doing to solve the problem? I mean, 'cause I know some places they're bringing in Aetna.
There's no plan, there's no Plan B.
They're just hoping that they work things out. So I don't know, I can just see, especially down there in Allegheny County, if this goes a month into, you know, January, February, they have some people that are gonna...
Sure.
...make a stink about this. So I still think it's a game of chicken they're playing, but, you know, I'm just saying, would it hurt to bring in another carrier to say, hey, you have access to UPMC, and if our members wanna go with you for no extra costs?
We could ask Mr. Ingles or Dr. Harris to get in touch with Allegheny County Consortium and see if...
Yeah, you would have to talk...
They have a Plan B of some kind or other, just in case it doesn't occur.
You would have to talk to the consortium to see what limitations you have and what the responsibilities are in your relationship with the consortium. As far as bringing in an outside carrier, that, of course, is something that if you're able to do that because you're not limited by the consortium, that's something that would be a decision between the association and the district, and you essentially would be opening a contract for purposes of negotiating terms and conditions of that coverage.
That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, good question, though. Dr. Koszka, you have anything to answer that?
No, I think like everybody in the room, everybody's sitting and waiting, you know, what, marginalization, what we're doing is we're planning that they're not gonna work it out.
That's what most people are planning.
If you see what happened, what the literature in the paper is and the way they're approaching each other, to your point earlier, they're playing chicken, but I, we don't anticipate them working it out.
And you don't?
No. But you never know.
Well, then what happens if they don't work it out?
Basically, what happens is if you're a Highmark member, you can't go to UPMC only hospital. You can go to what they call the donut hospitals, that are basically everybody around them, accepts both insurances. Same for Highmark as well.
But if you have UPMC insurance, you can go anywhere.
Not at Highmark.
No, you can't.
You can't go to Highmark?
No, you can't. Oh, no, no, there's...
Okay.
You can go.
They're shutting each other out.
Exactly, you're gonna pay.
Like, if you're UPMC, you can't go to Forbes, I don't think.
Nope.
Was there any way that we could seek the answer that he's requesting regarding bringing in a private carrier? That's not...
Well, I think, like you said, it's probably a red question that he asked the consortium if they're...
I have it down, Sean, I'll make sure we go through it.
Yeah, I just don't, like I said, I don't know that, I'm wondering legally if we can bring in an outside carrier, which, this was a topic in the past ten years ago, and we did bring something else in, and the consortium couldn't really hold that up, but, you know, this would only be for this instance where, you know, you might have people that want access to, there are some carriers that could be access to everybody.
Aetna is one of them, and that's their advertising app. I called our, I've made a few calls to different people at the state, and I said, what do you think the chances of them working it out? And they said, not, not at all. And they said that we've been kinda spoiled around here because lots of parts of this country have this division. We're just not, we're just not used to it. I don't think that's a really good excuse.
I don't think it's gonna affect us as much as, like Mr. Petrusi said with Allegheny County was.
Yeah.